This performance will be the last gig. We are there to perform music for the art show, which provides a different experience for us as performers. Additionally, people don't usually hear the jazz ensemble with a chance to experience that.
Couple of images of five by fives from years past. And now One Night Only, so this is our other Merton Williams featured event. This is our year-end art show, which was first held in 2022. There's a little start there. In 2021, that was the year we really didn't host concerts and/or art shows. That was, we had some things going on that year. And we at Merton Williams were able to host one outdoor concert. And during that concert, kind of in the structure of it, we were able to also have an art show featured our padded building. And we took that idea and next year we were able to get out and have events that sort again. One Night Only was born. It's our year-end art show. It's the last concert of the year. We have art-making activities. The families evolved. Food truck. We turned it into a really nice art and music festival that we're very, very proud of. We hold it outside. There was one year where it was inside. I'll show a picture. That was wonderful as well. But it's a great combination of music and art. And a little bit on this is Elise.
One Night Only is our year-end art show, but it's a great celebration of art and music. Students get to choose their own featured art piece, making it a survey of all the work we do throughout the year. It's a wonderful concert and it's a chance for the community to get outside, paint, draw, and create art as well.
And with a little bit about the music side of things, oh, and us.
One Night Only setup, most people who attend the One Night Only don't realize the amount of work it takes to set up the event. Last year, we had ten to fifteen students stay after school to assist with the setup. This required moving sixteen chairs and stands, as well as percussion equipment and jazz ensemble gear. At the end of the show, we all worked hard together. We're in the equipment back. Many of the seventh graders used themselves hours for their national junior on-site by service. It was fun to see all the work behind the scenes that goes into this concert.
So a little sampling of one of Mr. Weber's ensembles from One Night Only. Very little sample, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Weber was on the list tonight. He is, I'm speaking for him. I think he would be okay with this. He is incredibly, well, the talents and the musicians, just where we bring these events together. And what his groups have done, uh, much longer than that, I actually. So a couple of pictures. There's some art making done in the, the event itself. Here is the event that was held indoors. It was a wonderful event. You know, with rain cats and dogs. So two great events that come together and with a sort of summary on One Night Only, we have Austin and Zach.
What makes this event special is helping to wrap up the year together. The week before, the band had their final concert at the high school. Now we get to perform outside to celebrate our art and music for the community. People who usually would not hear our music or see our work.
For many of us, this event allows us to be involved in both subjects. It is a great way to include the year with the wonderful community of them. We are all excited for both great shows.
And with our last couple of points on the collaborative connected way between art and music, Mike, take it, Bartley.
Hi, I'm Amy John, here from the U of U. If you don't know me, I speak with Phil over at Merton Williams. Um, so I'm gonna tell a little bit more about collaboration for these two shows. Um, collaboration takes many forms. So art, music are apparently collaborative experiences for our students. Um, the musicians, they work together and collaboratively create a finished work of music to perform. And then in the art room, my, our art students work cleverly to prepare naked papers for collage. And then they are used by all of our students as they're creating their artwork for the show. And these are just a few pictures of the students creating the painted papers, um, some of the finished works. And then crazy is why, that's the ice cream truck from, uh, One Night Only from last year. Um, collaboration across our departments, um, that's something that we all, the three of us work together on closely, um, just to provide an immersive event for all of you and everyone in the community. We work together on all aspects of the event, um, snacks, um, setup, creating a musically immersive and visually immersive event. And I've got one more slide to show you. This is a slide from the indoor event as well, um, when we were not able to be outside for One Night Only. Um, when we work together, it allows music families to come and see art events. And then it allows, um, parents and families of our eighth grade artists to do music events. So it really expands our community and allows people to experience things and, um, other art forms that they can have in the state. So, um, we're really proud of all these events and all the work that goes into putting things together. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Um, so Julia has brought along some examples of some five by five artwork from previous years. Would you like to, to show some of those flesh numbers? Um, yeah, these are previous five by fives.
Does anyone have any questions about the art of the event?
Thank you.
I think the both of them, and they are awesome. So thank you for putting them up.
I do. Do you get a lot of adult participation in the artwork at the One Night Only when?
Yeah, yeah, they can be really good.
And what are some of the samples, or examples of artwork? Are they painting? Are they chopping? All the above?
All of the above, painting, um, working in chalk, sometimes the murals that we've created. And then people can call and paint or create patterns of murals, um.
Smaller.
Oh, tiny paintings. We love the tiny paintings. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of community adults, siblings, um, you name it, everybody's small. It's great.
I'd like to make it this way.
Yeah, well, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, guys. If you guys don't mind all coming up front, um, just so we can get a picture, if that's okay? Teachers and students, that'd be amazing. Dave, do you want us out of the way?
You guys want to come around the block? Do you want?
Sure. I was hoping to be out of the way, but sure.
James, that's.
Sorry, guys. Sorry. With district updates, uh, Dr. Toric.
All right, great to see everybody tonight. I want to start out by thanking both our art and music, uh, departments at Merton Williams, uh, especially the students, uh, great presentation. I always say that Merton Williams is the gem of the district, and it really is. It's, uh, got great people all around doing a lot of great things for kids. So I thank them very much for sharing all the great work they're doing. But one of the most important things I see with their work is they bring the community into our schools. And that aligns with our strategic plan of making sure that we're continuing to grow our relationship with the greater community. Uh, yesterday, we honored the men and women who have served our country. Veterans Day is a time to reflect on courage, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment to our veterans have shown to protect our freedoms and values. So to all the veterans, we have many veterans on staff. We have many veterans that live in the Hilton community. Uh, we thank them for their service and their sacrifice, and we are forever grateful. Uh, the Hilton Education Foundation is hosting its annual trivia night. That's, uh, tomorrow evening at six P M. at Foster's. The last I heard, there was room for one more team. They're not gonna take Watkins. Uh, but if you want to stop out and support, uh, our students through the Alumni Association, that would be great. So that's at Foster's at six o'clock tomorrow night. Uh, Hilton High School production of Anne of Green Gables runs November twenty-second through the twenty-fourth. Uh, we wish all of our students and staff a great show. Uh, you have received an email from Matt, so if you're interested, uh, they will compliment you with some free tickets to, uh, come out and support our students and staff. And last but not least, because this is the only meeting in November, uh, not to rush it, but I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, uh, wishing you a day filled with gratitude and connection. And that's everything I have for today.
Thank you. Any questions?
All right, Ms. Lee. Some of the prefaces, they say in my update, it's a little long, but I have to give it to a meeting and put it into one on November. Uh, so I'm gonna give you a couple of updates on instructional programs at the elementary level first. First is an update on our roadmap for revitalizing reading instruction. So as of the end of October, we have three teachers in-house who've now completed their letters facilitator training. So we will now have in-house facilitators so that we can continue to train, uh, the next cohorts of teachers. But then also have a process embedded that when new teachers come into the district or teachers in grade levels, that they'll have the opportunity to have the full four days, um, of letters training. Um, those trainers will start training cohort number two. Cohort number two will be our second grade teachers, uh, Janet Anne specialized, as well as reading teachers. They will start their first of four full-day trainings on the March Superiors Conference Day. That's the same day that cohort one will finish. Um, over the fall, we developed a special development course in response to the ongoing learning of our kindergarten first grade teachers in that first cohort. They've been learning together in a special development that's offered P L C approach, if you will, um, where they've been able to learn together, try things in the classroom, come back and debrief about them, um, specifically around their small group instruction and their whole group instruction, and the ways that they've been using the newly purchased affordable texts, and a really great reading program, um, as well. Our grades two through six teachers on this fall Superiors Conference Day, the keynote address from Jared Gates and Jan Barkin. You'll remember those names from the Shifting the Balance book that we did last March. That was K two. They have two books. They have K two and three-five. So this past fall, it was our upper elementary teachers learning about the shifts in that three-through-five book. And then much like in past, as we followed for our early adaptability in one, those teachers will have a choice between, um, four different ways to engage in the book study between December and March. When we get back together at March Conference Day, while we have cohort one and two finishing up and starting letters, um, that group will work on some hand-on, um, ways to bridge, to practice what they've learned into their classroom. So moving quite, uh, along at a nice pace, uh, we're more than willing to be able to, um, to assure to the state of fall twenty-five that we are aligned to the required shifts in reading instruction for their letters and reading from January twenty-fourth. Still on the subject of elementary, our math programs, uh, K through eight, um, we use math investigation at K five. We currently use C M P three at six through eight. Both of those are up for either a renewal or maybe not, um, in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. So our subscription ends at the conclusion of next school year. We do our due diligence to determine whether or not continuing with those programs or investigating others would be in the best interest of students and staff. So we've surveyed teachers. We've canvassed all the schools in Monroe County for the programs that they use. Uh, we've analyzed three assessment data comparative across Monroe, two and one F O Cs, and determined that there is no one program that consistently outperforms any other. So after a great deal of research, um, we found that there is no perfect program, which is kind of what we had figured, um, but wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence through that. Um, what we determined in working with grade level leaders and with our Merton Williams math department is that we are going to bring in some reps from companies to show us some different programs. Based on that research, we did have a couple of programs that piqued our interest. And so during a grade level leader release day in January, we have reps coming in to show us three different programs. The goal will be to choose the two that best fit our needs by doing a crosswalk of those programs, looking to pilot two programs in each of the elementary buildings next year throughout the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, making a recommendation for which program to move forward with in about February of twenty-six, so that we have an idea for budgeting purposes, training purposes, and we get implementation of a new math program in the fall of twenty-six. We also recognize that because there is no perfect program, it's not really all about the program or the teacher manual that you have, but more so about your deep learning around mathematical progressions and the way that practices can be embedded in their instruction. A meeting with math coaches from F O Cs, um, in two weeks to develop a roadmap for math similar to what we have for reading. Being mindful that we can't overload any individual, uh, staff members all at one time. So as we move that reading progression up, we're gonna look to make math right after it so that it continues to grow over the years, but does so in a way where we can actually engage and learn deeply and implement without being overwhelmed by too many initiatives at one time. At seven through twelve, we're continuing our grading conversation. So you might recall that we were using this year for three common staff meetings on grading practices. This afternoon, uh, Dr. D'Amico and Dr. Green hosted the second of three of those meetings for this year. We worked with our P C group to plan those. And, um, great conversations today around grading practices and the philosophy, knowing that our goal in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is to develop a common definition of grades seven, twelve here in Hilton, um, and a philosophy that we can adhere to, and then analyze our practices in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to make sure they align to that philosophy. Uh, we also had our very first ad hoc grading committee meeting in early October. Um, it's a committee of approximately thirty-six individuals, made up of board member, college admissions representatives, classroom teachers, lecturer and teachers. We have a wide range of parents, both from Merton Williams and middle school, as well as six students that are serving on the committee as well, on Merton Williams and high school students together. So we created, um, together a survey that we'd be giving one to staff, one to families, and one to students together for our practices and perceptions around grading. And that staff survey should go out next Tuesday, so staff can complete it during their department meeting time. Then we get back together for the grading ad hoc committee meeting in January, where I will analyze the survey results. And then this is my last update from. Um, this is about registration. So as you know, we hold a lottery for both our U P K and also for Quest. One of the small changes that we're making that will have a very large impact in our ability to be proactive is that we are asking families to register their children before applying for the lottery. So in the past, we've allowed people to apply for U P K positions. And then, once they have a spot in the lottery, then we might be asking three, four, five, six months down the road, have you registered yet? We need you to register. You have to register. What happens if you don't register? Then you have to discontinue spaces, go back to grading list. It's kind of a disruptive process for families, so we're really looking to be proactive. Um, Dave Gates is going to help us in some of this P R to make sure that we're getting that word out early that families know. Mr. Warren has already communicated to Quest families at their info night, um, that we're asking for registration first and then, uh, consideration for either of those two lines. So a lot of information. Have you answered any questions that you have?
Um, on the, uh, conversation on whatever we're bringing, um, what was the perception of the college rep? Colleges, it was, was it the college reps from around here, or was it the council, principal counselors?
We have an admissions administrator from Sidney Rockford, who's serving on the committee, who has also served on committees in other school districts in Monroe County as well. Um, she's also a parent of a seventh grader and a senior in a neighboring district, um, and has worked in a couple of different colleges. She served on a panel that F O Cs had last year. Um, there were college admissions representatives from, um, Ivy League schools, private schools, uh, state schools, um, community colleges, et cetera, who all spoke the same, same kind of things. And their reality is that for students applying to college, colleges are accustomed to taking applications from all over the country, as well as international students. So they're constantly navigating different transcripts. So as far as what a district chooses to do with grades, it's really neither here nor there to the college reps. It's more so how they read school profiles, do course choices, and then they weigh in a bunch of different factors. But whether a school uses this grading scale, that approach, we're neither here nor there to our college reps. But it's a good, um, it's a good perspective to have in the conversation. And actually, three of the parents who are on our committee work at Higher Ed as well, just by coincidence. So it's great to have multiple perspectives. Any other questions?
Just a point of clarification. You said both Merton Williams and the high schools have students on this?
Yes.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, Merton Williams even got transportation for our students to go over and to join, so it was a great, great collaborative effort. Uh, Dr. Green, Dr. D'Amico, uh, and their administrative teams were instrumental in inviting parents and students and finding, and they just want to give up their time, uh, four times a year. Um, they were, they were probably some of the best conversational staff meetings for students, I can imagine. Thank you. All right, Dr. Dan.
Uh, good evening. I just want to, if you can believe it or not, we're already starting recruiting. Uh, so Brittany is just finishing up an event at Roberts Wasden. Uh, I'll be out at St. John Fisher, uh, to kick off kind of a series of meet and greets, mock interviews, and other events uh, as we get to start meeting our, uh, amazing candidates that are coming forward. Um, I had a great conversation with a young lady who's graduated from December. And, uh, boy, there's just a lot to, um, teach and provide, uh, new candidates with information about the district. Uh, so it's really interesting that the interviews have actually started almost reversing. I feel like we're, uh, we're getting interviewed because again, uh, great candidates are out there and they, they want to be, uh, selected and where they apply. Uh, so that, that's a positive. One reason that, uh, might surprise you is that Rochester's always held a teacher improvement event. Uh, this is a bar where all of the colleges come together, uh, they bring all their education students. It's kind of, we're not, uh, starting a few years back, uh, but this year they've said absolutely not, that they will not be coordinating any type of teacher improvement day event in Rochester. Uh, so we anticipate, uh, heading out to Buffalo at one point, Syracuse. I think it's a Syracuse slash Portland, uh, area event. So, um, we're out, we're gonna be out there bangin' the bushes. We already started. Uh, I'm fortunate to have taken a call too from Nazareth, and I'll be going to speak to their student teachers, uh, I think in the first week of December, uh, prior to them departing, uh, for that student teaching experience in the spring that they will have. So just getting our name out there and, uh, again, just between Brittany and myself, uh, we're gonna head three of the local colleges, uh, by the end of December. Uh, so if you think about recruiting, uh, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Scotty can tell you, that typically always happened in April and May. And now, uh, here we are, we're gonna head to three colleges by the end of December. Uh, so, uh, we're glad to do it. Now we're glad to, uh, support those students and those institutions so that we can again continue to recruit the best candidates. Uh, also on a communication note, I did send, uh, the board, uh, what our blog looked like with our H R business office blog. Uh, this has been well received as we've hit kind of a number of topics, especially with regard to, are we considering retirement? Are we opening enrollment for medical plans right now, uh, during the month of November? Uh, deadlines for G C M, that's a good reminder to the board of education, don't forget. I mean, your courses, it's a warmest committee, uh, the business office, uh, in collaboration with them. Also provide great updates on payroll, W twos, uh, and other items that we're seeing and experiencing. I also give a shout out to the technology department. You may have seen the kind of towards again. But they've cut our, uh, times back, so if a teacher or another staff member submits a ticket, um, they've cut their response time in half. Uh, it's taking less than half a day to close out, uh, a good portion of our ticket. So that's really kudos to them. So, uh, again, if there's, uh, ideas or topics, we're always interested in trying to communicate those. Uh, but it has been a very timely tool. I anticipate, um, sharing our blog strategy and communication tools uh, with the Rochester area school personnel administrators later this break. So that's all I have.
Any questions? All right, okay.
So I have a couple of updates for you tonight. Uh, the first is from food service, uh, just an update. As we continue through C E P for the entire district, uh, preparing our October numbers for breakfast at the elementary schools, uh, from twenty-three, twenty-four to now. Uh, we've more than doubled, uh, the total number of breakfasts we're serving. So, and that's without adding any staff. Uh, it does take a little bit longer for the kids to get through the line and, and with all those kids that are now getting breakfast. But, uh, kudos to Scott and his department for really pulling off a seamless, uh, transition to C E P for that. So I'll continue to update you throughout the year, but I wanted to highlight at least the breakfast side of things to start. And then my last update is just on the, um, tis the season, budget presentations. Uh, so typically in January, uh, you hear the budget process presentation at this meeting and along with approving the per-people allocations and enrollment projections. Again, no new board members, uh, for the, at least the four that are here, but for the three that aren't here as well, they're all existing board members. And we haven't changed our process for our, um, for our budget. We're gonna continue moving forward with that. Uh, some really, really minor tweaks as we kind of debrief throughout the year. Uh, but our structure for developing the budget has relatively remained, uh, the same. So, um, we're not gonna provide that presentation to you tonight in public session, but I will have that presentation posted up on the website, uh, tomorrow. And we are also hosting a community, um, presentation in January. It's gonna be the third, uh, Tuesday in January uh, to go over the, that presentation and ask, uh, you know, any questions that the community may have on that. So there'll be plenty of opportunities for, um, the community at large to get that information. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, we can move on to public comments. If anyone has public comments, they're to fill out a comment card with the district clerk. Um, if you are speaking tonight, please stand and come forward to address the board. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Questions and comments may not identify or address specific personnel or personnel issues. The board reserves the right to defer responses to collect additional information as needed. The board will not actively discuss a public comment unless it appears on the formal agenda. Comments and questions must be communicated in an orderly and respectful manner. And lastly, the board may limit the length of public comment portion of the meeting in order to address other scheduled school visits. With that being said, we have one speaker, uh, tonight, and it's Invin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make sure you hear me. I'd love to hear you guys just a little. Good evening, Dr. Porzek, administration and board members. I'm Shirley Inman, a forty-six year resident at Hilton. I need help in understanding where and who designed the new school tax factory for two thousand twenty-four. At a time when inflation is so insane, why would we here in New York State? Or is this karma in Monroe County with a reassessment factory change? Not only a different factory method, but such an insane increase? Could it be to drive more seniors out of the state? Or that we're not smart enough to notice? When our school taxes are the highest in the nation, are we getting the money towards when we can't manly financial management to our students? Maybe I understand this. I've read in children. I don't mean to be a ninety-eight-one-year-old, but when we pay forty-five thousand dollars per student in the Rochester district, then I have to be careful where I. I don't mean to be a 90, 81-year-old, but when we pay $25 per student in the Rochester district and I have to be careful where I shop, are we really getting our money's worth? What kind of state are we living in? Where is our common sense? Better yet, respect for each other. And, and again, if this movie is too large, too uncomfortable, back in the movie world, beyond the gap, microphone to the all over table. And as we're really appreciative, then in understanding how people can give, I've gone to the assessment. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That's it for public comments. We're going to move on to the approval of minutes from the October 8th meeting. Any questions at time? Can we have a motion to approve those minutes? Minutes and seconds? All in favor? All right, we're going to move on to board reports. I'm looking forward to going to see Anne of Green Gables, it was one of my favorite, favorite books growing up, so I'm very excited about the math. Oh, it's next weekend, next weekend. Oh, I have it on my calendar wrong.
Shirley night tomorrow night, uh, but next weekend or the 27th.
Um, all right. Information to change, uh, I think is, um, the new regulation, so the, um, district, uh, has, uh, uh, to work, uh, about. Uh, there's this public conference, uh, is, um, uh, to, um, to talk to, uh, questions of college students about legislative process, and, uh, uh, all of itself, and, uh, uh, because, uh, here they have, uh, um, legislative community.